Welcome everyone to this special meeting on Monday, May 3rd. And I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Kirk, can you please call roll?
It's a pleasure. Councilmember Grofels?
Here.
Councilmember Pappin?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. Thank you. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed on to Zoom, you can use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you are using the phone to call in, you press star nine to raise your hand. And when you're called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And we're going to move on to the first item on the agenda, which is a study session, solid waste rate restructure. We have Roxanne Murray from the Waste Manager is our Waste Management Supervisor. Take it away Roxanne.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'd like to just make a couple of brief introductions. Rick Simonson is the Senior Vice President for HFNH Consultants. And Gabe Sesser is also here. Gabe is an analyst with HFNH. And we, the city staff contacted them and asked them to help us with our rate overview, to analyze our rates, do a rate study, see where we are and what we need to do going forward, knowing we have a lot of objectives to meet and are our rates coming in as they should. Just to give you a little bit of a background, in 2006, the city was not in compliance with AB 939, which required the city to divert 50% of the waste that was generated from going to landfill. So the city council at that time did everything they could to make us in compliance. We were facing heavy fines if we didn't. The average resident generated about 64 gallons or paid for 64 gallons worth of garbage that was serviced once a week. Recycling was every other week and green waste was picked up every other week. We knew we had to do something and that's when the city council established a progressive rate structure, which basically the more you, the more waste you generated, the more you paid per gallon. And it was extremely effective. As of 2009, we have been in compliance with all waste diversion requirements from, for, from the state from that date on. We are looking at new challenges from SB 1383, which requires now 75% of our way, our organic waste to be diverted from the landfill as of 2025. And with that, we'll let Rick go forward and let you know a little bit about what we asked them to do, about the rate study that they did, their observations and give us some objectives for going forward.
Thank you Roxanne. Good evening, I'm Rick Simonson with HFNH. I'm going to try and share my screen here for the presentation. So can you all see the cover slide?
Yes, we can, but it looks like you're, I'm not seeing in presentation mode exactly yet. I'm seeing your whole desktop. Or maybe that's how it's supposed to be.
No, that was not my intent. It was just to be this screen, it says. Is that the same?
That looks great. Perfect.
You can just see this slide now?
Just see this slide.
Excellent, thank you for letting me know. So again, thank you Roxanne. I am Rick Simonson, Senior Vice President with HFNH Consultants. And I do have with me tonight, Gabe Sasser as well. He's assisted with the project. So a little background, just real quick with HFNH. We have been in business since 1989. The core of our business, a lot of it is procuring and negotiating solid waste, collection and disposal agreements, as well as collection and processing of recyclables and materials for jurisdictions throughout the state of California. And the other side of our business is setting 218 compliant utility rates. So water, sewer and solid waste. And my role at the firm, I joined the firm in 2000 and I head up and manage our rate setting, utility rate setting department within the firm. And just a little side note, in 2000, the first time on the job, my very first day, was a project for the SBWMA. So our firm has been helping the SBWMA of which you're now one of 11 members, I understand. So when it was first formed, there were 12 member agencies. So we've been assisting the city with their solid waste and recycling needs since really the inception of our firm and I have since 2000. That's just a little background on our expertise in setting utility rates. The rest of the presentation, I'll just give a brief overview. Roxanne set it up nicely. You have a progressive rate structure, but what does that mean? What do your current rates look like? What we're seeing as maybe a restructure of those rates? And also what were the overview, what were the objectives when we set out to do the project? We'll talk about some preliminary results and some potential scenarios for setting rates, either for the next year or up to the next five years. We'll talk about next steps in getting there and also a timeline. So I'll be presenting quite a bit of information. We're not looking for direction tonight, but we will be in front of you at least a couple more times. So this isn't something you need to grasp right away. We will be back and can answer questions. So for tonight specifically, we, I do want to share with you our preliminary results, looking over the next five years. What are your expenses and what are the projected revenues coming in over the next five years? And just get some feedback regarding the different options, the different scenarios I'll be presenting for rate adjustments to meet any revenue shortfalls. And those will hover around three basic categories. Meaning how much revenue from rates do we want to generate over the next five years? Knowing that with number two, you have reserves. So your rates don't need to cover all the costs. But with reserves and the use of those reserves, it's good to have a policy on a minimum level. You don't want to dip below. So we'll talk to you about some prudent minimum reserve targets. And also the adoption of the rates. We have the ability per prop 218 to set rates for a five-year period. But you may want to do a shorter term, but we can't do more than five. So we'll talk about some strategies for setting rates between one and five years. So a little background, typically Roxanne comes to the council on an annual basis and looking to adopt kind of a uniform percent increase. For example, a couple of years ago, the last rate increase you did have was an across-the-board 4% increase. So all rates change by the same percentage. This year, we're looking at a little different based on the cost of service study we did. And we'll explain kind of the variances which we're seeing between your different rate categories and how maybe a uniform percent increase isn't the direction we want to go this year. And just to give you a little background on what your rates cover. So the revenue that's being generated first and foremost is to cover ecology or franchise hauler. They're collecting the materials at the curb. We need to cover their costs. And it's per their current franchise agreement, which I think 2022 will be the second year of that agreement. And when, once they collect the materials, they deliver them to the SBWMA facility in San Carlos, where it's either transferred for disposal to the landfill or processed there onsite at the recycler for recyclables or transferred to Newby Island and other organic processing facilities to take care of your organic materials. So once it's collected, disposed of or processed, in addition, there are some city fees that are covered. I'll get into some details there. Street sweeping are funded through your rates as well as other miscellaneous trash reduction programs here at the city. And last year, just to remind those who either were there or may be new to the council, there was not an increase to your rates for 2021. So in light of COVID, you're able to use some reserves instead of raising your rate. So we're coming off a year in which rates were not raised. Little background on your current residential rates. Residents and multifamily dwellings up to four units can each select a different solid waste size from 20 gallon up to 96 gallon and they're charged accordingly. All the charges are based on what you elect for your solid waste cart size. So along with that solid waste cart size, your subscription includes weekly collection of a 64 gallon recycling cart and a 96 gallon organics cart. If that's not sufficient, those volumes, residents may get additional recycling organics charge carts, but there is an additional charge for that. For your commercial and your multifamily dwelling units are larger than the four units, they have a variety of different service levels they can choose from. It really just depends on how much solid waste they need to place at the curb on a weekly basis. So they can choose from a cart, the same sizes as a residence or small bins, one cubic yard up to, I believe, six or seven cubic yards. As well, well as some larger boxes like the roll-off and compacters, it can be 20, 32 cubic yards. So they can also have that collected either one time a week or some do have seven day a week collection. So it all depends on how much material you're going to place at the curb each week. And included, I should note, in the containers, the carts, bins, compacters for solid waste, recycling, there is no additional charge. So each commercial business also is provided a recycling cart. However, the organic service, you can subscribe to organics as a commercial or multifamily apartment building. And that is offered at a 25% discount from the solid waste that you see there on the right-hand side. So slightly different than how we approach residential where it's fully bundled, all three services. So that's setting where we are currently. So when we, we're contacted by Roxanne, we met with the team to understand, well, what's going to be involved in the cost of service studies? We began this process last year during COVID and recognized we didn't need a rate increase. So we let it set dormant for a couple of months and we reconvened earlier this year using new budget numbers that have been produced to estimate 2022's costs. So first, we had to determine what is that revenue requirement? What are the costs that need to be covered? And once we understand that, determine the rate revenue that we have right now at current rates. What are we projecting to receive in 2022 if we didn't have a rate increase? So once you understand the numerator and the denominator, you, you can make the, the math work and you'll know exactly what percent increase you may need. So really that's bridging the revenue shortfall. But there is more than one way to do that. So you can divide with the numerator and denominator and get what a uniform percent increase would be through the rates, but that may not be what you want to do this year. You do have reserves that you can rely on. So we'll look at some strategies for doing that. And lastly, once we understand how much revenue in total needs to be raised, we have to look at the rates themselves. Are each of the service levels paying their cost of service? So that's the last step, designing rates and conducting the cost of service study. So we start with the forthcoming year. We're trying to set rates for 2022 and beyond. So we look at what your projected expenses are. And it's broken down into three basic categories and we've got a fourth line item here. I'll, I'll explain. First and foremost, we got to pay ecology for collecting the material. And that's projected to be 15.2 million in 2022 per the franchise agreement. With one caveat, they submit their compensation application in June, so next month. So these are estimates based on what they, their compensation was last year with a CPI type increase to estimate what it should be for 2022. It's a fairly standard approach in the franchise agreement that sets their compensation based on a variety of different indices, labor, fuel indices. So it, this should be a fairly good representation of what you'll pay ecology in 2022. On top of that, once they collect the materials, as I said, it goes to the SBWMA facilities and they're estimating about 7.8 million in tip fees for the materials that will be collected. Again, those tip fees are under review. This is based on a projected tonnage and your current tip fees that have been CPI'd for next year. So again, this, we'll get more information from the SBWMA as the year progresses, but this is again, an estimate. And then one of the larger kind of unknowns at this time, and Roxanne touched on it, is SB 1383 that requires the elimination of organic materials from landfills. And there's many different ways of accomplishing that. So the SBWMA and ecology are currently studying what will be the best and most economical approach for complying. And you have to start the compliance January 1, 2022. That's when their, the state will be looking to make sure you're making your efforts to get to removing organics from the landfills. So again, SBWMA and ecology are looking at that. Our firm actually is helping them. So we do have some idea in the next month or two, what those expenses could be. We've assumed a million dollars per year for that cost right now. And that's based on some high-level estimates. And we know that San Mateo is about a quarter of the business at ecology. So it just depends, it could end up as a ecology cost if they're doing a bulk of the work or it could end up in your SBWMA tip fees if the SBWMA will be taking on a bulk of the work. So again, we're not sure exactly what bucket it'll be in, but we're assuming about a million dollar expense for next year. And lastly, your city's cost about 4.3 million, which on line 10 you see there includes street sweeping, your fund 21 costs on line 11 for trash reduction programs, the staffing, the outreach, as well as the other expenses on lines 15 through 17, which the rates include a component for capital projects such as trash capture devices to keep trash out of the, the waterways, to comply with your regional permits, franchise fees that are collected and transferred to the general fund, as well as landfill closure fees, which cannot be used for operations. So they again, are transferred out of the fund because they're set aside for future compliance to close the landfill. So again, we're looking at 28.3 million in expenses. And we know that your current rates aren't generating that amount. So when we see a revenue shortfall, we know there's basically three different ways of handling that. You can look at it and say, we need an additional 10% revenue. We're going to increase our rates by 10%. That can cover those costs and it can address the cost of service. But as with last year with the pandemic, your residents and businesses are continuing to feel the impacts, then maybe that's not a, a great time to just increase the rates and that's all. So there's another alternative is using reserves. But that can be a short-term fix if you don't have enough reserves. It can be depleted quite quickly if you don't increase your rates. And you would face significant increases down the road as it's really just deferring the costs. So usually, as we counsel our clients, it's usually a combination of one and two. So let's balance using your reserves and, and reducing those rate increases as much as possible. So that's what we've explored for you tonight. So this is a slide that's got quite a bit of information on. I'm going to spend a minute or two because you'll see this slide repeated. So it, it's a good one to get familiar with as you'll see the different impacts of the assumptions that we make. And it'll be laid out exactly like you see here. So, so quickly across the top is what we've assumed, your revenue increases for each of the next five years. We reflect that in 2021, you did not have an increase. And now we're looking at the next five years, 2022 through 2026. The stacked bars are what I went over with first, the ecology collection costs on the bottom in green, post-collection costs, the city costs. And lastly, the estimated SB 1383 cost there. So your cost increasing from about that 27 million to above 30 million by 2026. And the black line represents your current rate, so just over 25 million. So we see we have a shortfall over the next five years. It's continuing to increase. At the bottom of the graph, I've included your current reserves. We project your reserves have started this calendar year at seven point, if I can see there, 7.4 million. And we know in 2021, you did not have a rate increase. So we're dipping slightly into your reserves to account for that. And moving forward, if we don't have rate increases, you see the red line there, your reserve balance by 2023 will be depleted. And I'll touch on the blue line on the next slide. But I think the takeaway here is if we do nothing, our reserves are quickly depleted. So before I, I jump into what that blue line means, here is how we calculated that, that blue line. So your reserves. So I mentioned you started the year with 7.4 million. So we know reserves are there to be used, not just accumulated. But what is a reasonable minimum balance? What don't we want you to go below? Of course, we don't want you to go, go below zero, but for cash flow purposes, you're going to need cash during the year to pay some bills until revenues come in. So we like to see a minimum target above zero. You do not have a, a current official solid waste fund reserve policy. And in rate making for our water and sewer and solid waste customers, the industry standard is to look at how frequently you receive your cash. So ecology bills and they remit to the city your revenues each month. So a rule of thumb is to set a minimum reserve at 1.5 times your billing frequency. So in this case, we're recommending drawing that blue line I just mentioned and keeping your reserves above that blue line at one and a half months or 12.5% of your annual operating expenses. So in this case, we'd like to see reserves stay above 3.4. And so you, since your reserves are currently at 7.4, we know we have some monies that we can use to help mitigate some of these rate increases that we're facing. So bring that all together, I'll start with just the blue line at the bottom. So that's a 3.4 million. Moving forward, when we get to these scenarios, our, it's our intent to keep that red line, which is the projected fund balance above that blue line. So what I've shown here for scenario one is the keeper, is to have some rate increases only and not to touch your reserves. So you see your flat red line. So this is kind of the high mark. In order to meet your expense needs for each year, we'd be facing an 11.5% increase followed by 3% CPI type increases moving forward. So that is a double-digit increase in 2022. And that may not be the direction you would like to go considering the pandemic still going on and residents and businesses still feeling the effects of that. So I like to present this as, well, here's probably the high mark of where we'd want to go for 2022, 11.5%. So that brings us to scenario two, which is a combination of using some of your reserves. As you see the red line dipping, but we like to keep it right around that blue line. And by the end of the five years, you're actually on the up slope in your reserves and above that blue line. And we can do that by having 5% annual increases instead of having that initial 11.5%. So kind of smoothing it out over the five years. And you know, I've been talking a long time, but anytime if somebody wants to stop me, I'm open to questions, but I will open it up at the end as well. So I'll.
I, I just have one quick question.
Yes.
If I may say the mayor, can you just give me actual dollars of what you think the deficit would be? I see your bar, but in 2021, what does that mean? Is that about a million dollars shortfall and then 2022? If you can just give me actual numbers.
Yeah, I don't have that right in front of me. But yes, the 2022 is just over a million dollars. It's less than a million dollars in 2021. This is, let me step back real quick because this is with an increase. So what we're facing here, each year, the first 2022, we're looking at it's about 4 million and then increasing about 2 million per year from there. And that's just eyeballing this. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. Excellent.
Yes, thank.
You're welcome. So the final step when we design rates is we have to look at the cost of service for each service that's being provided. What's the cost to provide that service to the individual subscribing to 20 gallons per week collection versus 96 gallons per week collection? And the reason we do that is Prop 218 that was passed in the 90s. It says that fees and charges must be proportional to the cost of providing the service attributed to the parcel. For the longest time, water and sewer were rates that were always subject to 218. And in the more recent years, attention has been paid on solid waste to also comply with the Prop 218 requirement for cost of service. So as Roxanne mentioned, a progressive rate structure was employed by many communities in California to get them in compliance, to get people to throw less away. And that was okay at the time. Now we're seeing a move towards the cost of service. And what does that mean? So I'm going to walk through what that means using our scenario number two, where we want to generate 5% more revenue. Okay, so just 5% in total revenue. And in the past historically, to generate that 5%, you would increase all your rates by 5%. And that's okay if you already know your rates align with the cost of service. But do we know that? So we conducted a cost of service study and allocated the costs that I've been discussing, ecology, SBWMA and the cities to each customer class and each level of service within that class. And this slide gives you an idea of those findings. You have many, many rates. So I've chosen to, for single family, it's easy. You can show the 20, 32, 64, 96 gallon rates for commercial. Again, they can have carts, bins, roll-offs. So I've selected a few examples here, really to illustrate the trends we saw. And again, this is something we see throughout California. So this is nothing new with, when you see these differences, it's something we see in a lot of communities. So the residential and some of the commercial carts, specifically the smaller commercial carts, they're not covering their costs. Typically within the Bay Area specifically, just the base collection cost, just to collect a cart regardless of its size is about 40 to $45, $50 a month. And then depending on the size of the cart, you have disposal along with that. So you'll see, for instance, on row four, your current 20 gallon rate is 15.59, but the cost to collect that cart is 46.65. So we're seeing large variances between the rates and the cost of service. And that was done, as Roxanne to encourage, as Roxanne said, to encourage recycling. It's done throughout California. And it was to reduce what materials were going to the landfill. And it's worked. It's really worked statewide. In 2006, as Roxanne said, the typical family threw away 64 gallons of garbage and it cost them $24.18 a month at that time. Fast forward 15 years and 80% of your residents are subscribing to 32 or 20 gallon containers, which when you compare it to the $24.18 that the average was paying for. And now it's $24.93 for a 32 and a 15.59 for 20. So again, it's really worked. It incentivizes people to throw away less. However, Prop 218 does require we set rates based on the cost of providing that service. So we need to find a way, the state doesn't say you need to do this all at once. You don't have to change your rates and hit some of these smaller carts with double-digit increases here or triple digit as a percentage. This can be done over time because it's happened over time, the imbalance between the rates and the cost of service. So what we've done in there, this slide really is quite full and I apologize. It's trying to, you know, share a lot of information. I'll distill it down to how we set the rates here. So we're looking at five years' worth of rates from 2022 in the yellow to 2026. Those are the increases in the rates on a monthly basis. So the green shows you the rates that we're recommending and yellow is the change in that rate on a monthly basis. We set down to devise a rate structure and realign these rates with the cost of service. We first said, in this scenario, we're going to generate 5% additional revenue each year. And we're only going to increase cart rates for commercial and cart rates for residential. And the 20 and 32 gallon cart rates need to increase by a greater amount than the 64 and 96. So it's not that we're not increasing the larger containers. It's just they're increasing by a lower dollar amount to help realign the costs with the cost of service. And only the commercial carts will increase because the vast majority of the commercial bins, except for really the smaller ones, their rates are already covering their costs. So over the next five years, you don't need to increase those bin rates. And the compactor and roll-off rates will increase by the 5% you see above because they were right about their cost of service. So a couple of things I'll point out in here. In row or column F, that's for 2022. In this scenario, and again, this is just one option that we've explored and there's many different ways of doing this. I'll just run down the 2022 column to get you acclimated to the spreadsheet. At the 20 gallon and 32 gallon, because they're been the furthest from their cost of service, we're recommending a $4.58 monthly increase for 2022. And then $2.25 for the 64 and 96. And then two dollars and twenty-five cents for the sixty-four and ninety-six, something smaller because they're closer to their cost of service. And then we go down to the commercial on row eight. We split that into carts and bins. The carts, those dollar amounts that you see above for single family, those will apply to your commercial carts as well. But the bins, you'll see, we're recommending in this option, in this option only, no increase to those cart rates because they have been covering their costs. And lastly, the roll off at five percent, which matches the five percent annual revenue increases. And you see each year, we step into the rate increases to generate the necessary revenues. You see at the bottom that our revenues match our revenue requirement. So a five percent increase in the revenue requirement and an overall five percent increase in their revenues coming in. So that's one strategy of just phasing in, increasing those lower carts to approach their cost of service over time and not do it all at once. What would that mean? We're always asked, well, how do we compare? And I think this slide also illustrates that this is common for your smaller containers to not be at the cost of service. Again, that was to encourage recycling. And now that everybody's in the habit of doing it, the state's saying, let's get back to cost of service. So in this scenario, you see there in the light green, your current fifteen fifty-nine. And a potential four dollar and fifty-eight cent increase would bring your twenty gallon rate to twenty dollars and seventeen cents. So you leapfrog over Foster City and Redwood City, which I know they're currently reviewing their rates as well. So again, we're comparing to current rates. The average for all these communities, and these are the SBWMA member agencies with the addition of Atherton still in here and not including East Palo Alto because they only offer ninety gallon containers. The cost of service you see in the red towards the end, there's not too many communities that approach that cost of service. We see West Bay, we've been assisting West Bay over the last four or five years to help realign their costs. So that was a concerted effort on their part to get closer to that cost of service and as well as Hillsborough. So one more comparison here, the majority of your customers are in a thirty-two gallon container. So again, a four dollar increase doesn't move you much in the line of comparison to your SBWMA neighbors. And you can see Hillsborough, West Bay, Atherton are approaching that cost of service or just right at it. And each jurisdiction will have a slight different cost of services, different city fees are involved. So just to illustrate that this can be done in many different ways. We've gone over with staff many different iterations of rate increases. And here's another one to illustrate the point where in option two, we want to set again five percent in additional revenue. We will adjust the twenty and thirty-two gallon carts at a greater dollar increase than we do the sixty-four and ninety-six. The one difference here are the bin rates. We're assuming we increase those by two percent. So it's less than the five percent because we know they're currently covering their costs. But so we're not asking from them to make up the five percent, but increase there slightly each year. And that allows a lower increase to your single family rates as you see above. Instead of four dollars, it's about three dollars and seventy-one cents for a single family in twenty twenty two. So again, it's trying to realign your costs or your rates to your costs over time. You don't have to do it all at once. So let you see that a bit. So again, I've thrown a lot of information at you. So what we're looking for, maybe some dialogue or guidance moving forward. If what we've seen as far as what you have in reserves, I think those can carry you another year. If you think that's prudent, you cannot change your rates. And if that's an option, then this would be re-studied next year to look at another five-year period and see what a plan would be for your rate setting. Another option is just to do as typical, just a one-year increase, not knowing the SB thirteen eighty-three costs at this time, other unknowns with COVID. Maybe it's prudent just to take again, one year at a time. That's possible as well. Then staff could prepare a Prop two eighteen notice for just again, a one-year adjustment. Or looking at the five-year rate plan and looking at either one of those two options or something similar. We will come back in June or July to evaluate again, a five-year rate plan based on the feedback we hear tonight. And we could consider options for adjusting rates so each user pays its cost of service, again, phasing in over a five-year period. And once the council's comfortable with the recommendation for five years, that would begin the public outreach process and a Prop two eighteen noticing where the residents are notified and the businesses are notified that a potential rate increase is coming. And for next steps, again, just to let you know that Recology's numbers will be forthcoming so we can solidify some of those numbers on June fifteenth. So we can return to the council in either June or July to review those updates, anything that you request of us tonight. And at that time, if appropriate, request authorization to mail that notice. If we do mail the notice in June or July, that starts a forty-five day protest period that residents and businesses can protest, which would wind up with a protest hearing in either August or September, which must be at least forty-five days after mailing that initial notice. And you can adopt rates. So again, tonight, we're not looking for any adoption or direction, just that this is informational and we will be coming back in June or July. Because again, we're trying to get to rates to be effective January first, twenty twenty two. So with that, I'll open it up for additional questions. I can go back to any slides if you remember which slide you'd like me to expound on. I'll be happy to field any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the city council? See, I have a question. In my notes, I might have got this wrong, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So early on, you said we had three options and there was like one, two, and then number three was a combination of one and two. But then this last slide, the options one, two, and three were no increase, one year and five year. Are those different sets of options, one, two, and three, or are they kind of combined in some way that I'm missing?
Yeah, no, thank you for, because I'm sure others were confused with the numbering. So we're talking two different sets of options. So for, in any rate setting that we do, there's typically three options, only adjust your rates, only use your reserves, or a combination. And that's what that was referring to. For these next steps and trying to get your feedback is opening it up a little bit larger to say, if what you've seen with the amount of reserves you have and with the impacts of COVID still happening, if you want to forego a rate increase, that's option one here.
Got it.
And then for option two is, do we want to set rates for just one year? And option three is, do we want to set a five-year plan?
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions from councils, so I'd like to open up. Oh, is that somebody who's at council member, or council member Lee?
Thank you. I'm curious to understand the breakdown between our revenue categories, between the residential and the commercial. And in terms of percentage of revenue, but also the number of accounts.
Oh, yeah, it's roughly twenty, I believe twenty-three percent. I'll have to check those numbers. You have a large commercial base. I do know that. See if I have that in my back pocket. I don't have those numbers with me. You, I think the last numbers I saw, twenty-three percent of your revenue comes from commercial and the remainder comes from residential. You have a large section of both.
Thank you. And then, and just to clarify, not all commercials are required to opt into the organics services, is that correct?
As of now, with thirteen eighty-three, at least it has to be offered. And multifamily specifically and commercial cannot landfill their organics and need to make use of the services that are being offered. There's another way of handling this that the SBWMA is looking at where the materials are still collected, kind of how they are now. They go to their facility and they're separated there. So it depends on where the separation's going to occur. But moving forward, multifamily and commercial will no longer be allowed to put their organics in their solid waste container if it's going to the landfill.
Okay, and so that would essentially mean that they would be required to opt into that service and the cost of service, the cost of service would be applied?
That's correct.
And so my last question is, you know, with our current structure not being aligned to cost of service, but being designed to incentivize recycling and composting, you know, moving towards, like, are we running the rescue of actually disincentivizing the composting and recycling? Or do you feel like that's resolved by AB thirteen eighty-three?
No, that's a very fair question. And it really is jurisdiction specific. I think the culture within the Bay Area, people want to recycle and make use of those containers. And public outreach and understanding the cost of service is a good way to get out in front of residents and make sure they continue to utilize the recycling organic containers and subscribe to the right size. And outside of the Bay Area, we see in the Central Coast or the Central Valley, it's a little bit more difficult. People will throw their solid waste in the recycling containers if prices get too high. So it really is analyzing, and that's why we like the phase-in approach. See how it happens over time and make sure we're not getting that additional contamination in those containers as a result. So it's public outreach and I think throughout the Bay Area, it's just ingrained in our culture. So it tends to not occur as much. But again, the phase-in approach, and that's why phasing in is looked upon by the state of saying, okay, you don't have to get right to the cost of service. You can do it over time because it changes people's behavior.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Rick, additionally, I think too, you can look, there's still an incentive to have the smaller cans because they still are less than the cost of the larger cans.
Yeah, absolutely, Roxanne. And straight dollars, there's still an incentive, there just might not be as strong for some folks. But it really is still there because the true cost of collection and landfilling, there's always going to be a separation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Benioff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention, as the city's board member representing us at the SBWMA, I pay attention closely to what goes on with the garbage on the various garbage days here. And I have seen that contamination exactly. I know people who have a large house full of people and a twenty gallon waste container. So I have to guess that they're actually putting waste in either the compost or recycling bin. I'm not sure which, but they're stashing it somewhere. But that's not my question. I'm looking at your slides that were very busy along the bottom. You had option one and option two. And I see that on both of those slides, the annual revenue increases are five percent per year over the four years in question. And then I look at the cart rate increases and I'm not seeing huge differences. I guess I do, but can you explain that in more detail, the difference between those two slides, what we're looking at?
So the difference between the two slides, option one and option two?
Yes.
Okay, so the main difference is in option one on row nine that we're looking at here with the two percent increase to bin rates. That was set at no increase in bin rates in option one. So option two, shifting some of the costs to the bins, not the full five percent, but two percent annual increases, allows the single family rates on rows one and four in this option to be something lower. It was about a dollar per month lower.
Right. I see that. But overall, we're still getting the five percent revenue increase out of that.
Correct.
Okay.
We reached the same total.
I understand that. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Pepin.
I have a few questions. The first one is, can you go back to the chart that says we're going to use part of our revenue and then do part of an increase?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, right there.
Yes, here.
So that would be, we'd use some revenues through like midway twenty twenty-three and then you couldn't do it anymore. Okay, I just wanted to get a handle on how, what was the length of time? If we did a hybrid and we, let's say, did a five-year plan, which, you know, I don't know how I feel one way or the other about it. That's one of the questions I want to ask you. But if we did a five-year, we'd be tapping into reserves through midway twenty twenty-three.
That's right, a couple more years and then leveling off and up slope there in the last year.
And then would be still five percent across for each year? Okay. All right, so what has been your experience with respect to people adopting a five-year plan or going year by year? What have you seen? And then the next question I have is, have you, in raising the rates, have you seen folks communicating? Because a two-hundred percent loss on the smallest, the twenty gallon, is really quite startling. And I just wondered if that had been communicated to the public by other agencies who have been in the same position of having to raise their rates? And was that compelling for purposes of those other agencies? So what have you seen as to length of time and what about the two-hundred percent loss?
Yeah, so I'll start with the length of time. Solid waste, so on the water and sewer side, this is pretty typical, a five-year rate-setting plan. So now we're seeing more jurisdictions because of the amount of time it takes to do a study, a cost of service study, trying to lengthen those for solid waste as well. So it's a little new territory for many jurisdictions. I would say more often, we're helping West Bay Sanitary District, which is also part of the SBWMA. They go on a year-by-year basis with their solid races as well as a county. And we're also helping Hillsborough. So just specifically within the SBWMA, it's a year-by-year basis, except for this year. Hillsborough's asked us to do a five-year just like yours. They haven't decided yet if they'll do the full five or maybe three. Really, the deciding point is how sure one can be about the projections over the five-year period. You have the advantage of, you have a fund, you have a reserve fund. Not many of the communities do. So you have the ability to have these funds where you can phase these in and contemplate a five-year plan. Now, with a five-year plan, because we're phasing in, I believe it's best to have a five-year plan when you phase in. Because if you say you're going to phase in, you're only showing one year change, the question comes up from the public, well, this is a phase in, tell me what's going to happen in the future. So for that reason, I would do at least a minimum of three years. But again, you can do this step by step. There's no hard line rule on that. I think because of where you are with your reserves, you're in a good position to do more than one year. This has been communicated, this sort of differential between cost of service and the rates in many communities. We just helped SAC County do their rates and they had about, they were already on the path to cost of service unknowingly. They had just been, the way they were setting their rates. But they needed to increase rates by about ten dollars, which was about a fifty to sixty percent increase. And it took a lot of public outreach to explain why that was. So it's really about communication. The Prop two eighteen notice helps, but having a report around it and getting out in front with the public at public meetings is also helpful. And we've done that in many communities where we have little workshops around the city in different locations in case there is a significant increase. But by phasing them in, you reduce that sticker shock.
Are we good there for questions? All right, I'd like to open up public comment if there is any. Now's the time to raise your hand. Looks like we have one.
I have one hand raised from Drew.
Good, good evening there. Thank you for the.
Good, good evening there, uh, thank you for this presentation. Um, I heard at the end, and it's one thing I appreciate towards the end, the discussion that it doesn't have to be either one year or five year. It could be two or three year. I, I don't know that ultimately that makes sense, but I think there's really option one, two, and three, and four, or five, depending on how you look at this. Because there could be, uh, a few year, but not five year and stuff, just pros and cons. Um, so the one thing that I, I have to say I'm disappointed, there might be a lot of reasons for why this is, is no, no discussion around the cost side of things. How can the cost be adjusted? It's just, here's what we need and the default is we got to raise rates instead of here's, here's what the base cost is. And here, you know, maybe there's not options to necessarily change the base cost, but when I look at how, that, we get great service. I don't, I think the service is great, the trucks come every week, three trucks. But I also wonder about, I don't need them to be there every week. All, for all those bins, I could go every other week or I could do something very different. And what, what, how would that play out if the trucks weren't going down the street every week? And it's not about laying off people, it's not about cutting people's salaries or anything. It's just, what are options to do something different on the cost side? And maybe the next couple of years, it's just piloting those things. There's RFID tags, so maybe the certain people's bins have them. And so something's correlated to some households that are in a pilot study. But I kind of like the whole cost side, so what's the future? For the next ten, twenty years, we're just going to keep doing the same thing without innovation around, hey, how do we further drive down costs, sustainability, less trucks out there? That helps, uh, a variety of ways and stuff. So again, it, some of that may all flush out because everyone's throwing away the same amount or recycling compost. But I just would like to see some, some exploration on how we can potentially try to do things different in the future on the cost side and stuff. And this could be a time to pilot them in the next couple of years and stuff, and some will work, some won't, so. Uh, and I fundamentally don't have a problem trying to realign things to the cost. I find aligning things to the cost helps make better decisions potentially for people, as long as you watch the side effects, the negative side effects. So, uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and I, I just want us to be mindful that we only have about eight minutes to make sure that we give all the feedback, um, to, to, or, um, to everyone here. So, um, I know that, uh, our public comments are brought up a lot of good points, but I'd like to maybe, um, get into the discussion a little bit. And then if we have time, well, we can address those points. Um, I, we're just, uh, we're kind of under the gun now. So Deputy Mayor, did you want to kick things off on this discussion or additional questions? You're on, you're muted. You're muted.
Yes, thank you. First on the subject, I noticed that there was one option where it was to just, uh, go forward one year, uh, and wait and see what happens, uh, with, uh, the costs related to SB thirteen eighty-three, which I think is smart. There's a lot of unknowns there, um, and they're going to continue to be some unknowns as we go into some future years. It's a large bit of legislation that requires a lot of work in improving, uh, waste management business to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions. And, and it's quite in-depth. Um, then I think, uh, so that, I think that would be a wise move. Um, regarding, uh, the, uh, increase in costs, I want to maybe address a little bit what, of what was brought up by our public commenter. We did have, uh, every other week service, we had problems with rodents, we had problems with odors, we had a lot of problems. Um, and people did not like that kind of service, that is how we got to the every week service. Um, also, uh, I think, um, my concern with, uh, people buying the smaller container and shifting some of their waste into their other containers is a real concern. And that needs to be done because contamination at the facility is a major problem. And so, um, we need to do better at getting people to pre-sort, uh, at their homes and not seek to hide waste in the other containers. Um, uh, also, um, I like the idea of seeing that, that, uh, ready day fund, our, our, uh, uh, reserves, um, balance off there around, uh, twenty twenty-four, it looks like. Um, and then even, I think, go back up to where they need to be in relation to our annual costs of service. So, um, I like what I'm looking at, which is the scenario two. Uh, and I think it's a combination of rate increases, uh, in, and use of reserves. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Benia, did you, um, you might've said this and I apologize if I missed it, but in terms of the, the length of the, of the, of the change?
One year.
One year.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, who would like to go next? I am not seeing any hands. Um, as far as my comments go, I, I pretty much concur with Deputy Mayor Benia, uh, they made a lot of sense to me. I, I personally think we could maybe go, um, perhaps three years. Um, but I, I think that there's so many unknowns right now, I could be convinced to go otherwise. Uh, Councilmember Gottes.
I agree, uh, one year is sufficient by, I think there's too many unknowns. Uh, otherwise I would go to three. And I want to concur with everything that Rick said, including the fact that we are working really hard to identify areas where we can, uh, save costs. Uh, it's just incredibly difficult. The, the trucks are going a certain distance in order to collect from every house. And cutting service cuts costs, but we, cutting service also means that people are not recycling as often and we have rodent problems. So it, it is a, a perennial challenge to try to keep costs down. Uh, I thank all the work that went into the presentation, thank you very much, Rick.
Okay, before we go back, oh, Councilmember Lee.
Uh, Roxanne, did you want to chime in?
One comment that, um, I thought we should know is that, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is that the state law requires that putrisable garbage be picked up every seven days. So that's garbage and organic debris. So we are required by state law to pick up garbage and organics every seven days. So that is a consideration and we have seen by having weekly service for recycling, we've seen a hu- it's a, an incredible increase in the amount of recycling that we're able to collect. So, um, we may be able to minimize truck time if carts aren't brought out on the service day, if there's not a need. But by having the trucks come and they're actually, they're less than they used to be when we had every other day service, I mean, every other week service, due to, um, the automated services that are now offered. So, uh, we will always be looking at alternative ways to cut costs, but we are required by state law to pick up putrisable garbage every seven days.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I'll be real quick, I just want to, I, um, I agree with everything that was already said. Um, I, I am swayed to, um, to do more longer, longer-term planning, but given all the, um, all the factors that we can't possibly know at this point, maybe doing a one-year with a goal of setting a five-year plan, um, thereafter makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Pepin, want to jump in?
Yeah, I would concur, I, I'm, I, I don't see the projections as being quite as uncertain. Um, but, uh, we can do one year and then I would look probably at a three year. I don't know if I'd go all the way to five, but I, I think the three year would be, um, advisable after next year.
Okay, do you, how did we do? Did we get you the information that you came here for?
Yes, this has been very helpful, especially the duration that, that has a lot. I'll ask one more question. Um, the difference between the two options, um, after scenario two with the five percents, where we kind of borne all the costs on the residential and didn't touch commercial bins was the first option. And then just a minor increase to the commercial bins, so we didn't put quite a burden on the residential was option, uh, two.
I prefer option two, thank you.
Me too, option two.
Yes, me also, I, I just think that was a more reasonable jump.
Okay, excellent, that's what we were looking for, thank you.
All right, with, uh, one minute to spare, we did it. Um, thank you everyone, and I'll, this meeting is adjourned and I'll see everyone in a couple of minutes.
Thank you, Rick.